Oh.
Mackenzie.
There's Mackenzie.
It's working.
Yeah, you're right in the camera though. You're... Oh, she's peering into it.
Here we go.
Did I look great? You look beautiful. Actually, the camera, like, you can probably see, like, all my pores. Let me see.
You're literally right.
Actually, actually, I really... Wait, is it flawless? Yeah, honestly, it's not even that bad.
Tape, tape.
It's your setting powder.
Where did my tape go?
It's all acetone, maybe. What tape? Actually, in, like, a lot of foundation. Oh, I can't find it. You didn't have the tape?
Here's actually... There was tape. They taped those up there with tape.
Oh.
Do you still have my tape?
Where's the tape? Tape?
Who taped that up there?
Hannah.
Well, Hannah's a bad kid then, and she stole my tape and spent it on her.
It can't be Matty.
It really can't, can you? I mean, she's Hannah.
Exactly. She really, even when she does something wrong, did she mean to do it?
Right.
She's so...
Um...
Give me something to do.
Can you take these? Back here. Can you hang for a minute?
Yep.
Um...
Pretty boring. I just have to watch this. Make sure it doesn't turn out. That's about it.
Well, Sha said you can still, you're still getting to take photos, right?
Yeah, he said I can take a couple photos if I want to at some point. So who knows? Because... This is my life now.
What?
So this is my life now. Ava's not here. I'm sad.
Right. She's still gonna get, um, her comp to get, or...
Is she?
Is she, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
She'll be back tomorrow, I think, so she can still get it, so... It's okay. Don't worry. Don't worry. I would get her one either if she couldn't. Just take a photo. I'm tired.
Yeah?
Yes. I'm home.
You had dinner, right? No?
I came here. Well, I went on a walk. And then I took a nap. And then I got up and then I realized I had to come here, so then I came. And I'm wearing blue jeans. Everybody else is wearing dress slacks, so it's a little out of the picture.
Never.
And I want to change the settings.
Of this?
Yeah. It's a little bright, but I think that's because we have purple lights on.
Right.
So I think it'll go away.
You know, I brought this jacket, but I just don't think I'm gonna wear it.
You don't want to look super fancy?
I don't. You go to watch it.
I know.
Is that my part?
Um, it's unlikable. Go for it. Nope.
Just, gee, I'm, as of start, I'm gonna go out and pull this up on my phone to make sure I can hear it.
Okay. Sha, when should I start the recording?
Now's time. Now's time? Yep. So if you bring him extra...
Yeah, I know. Are we turning off the debate points?
Do you want them to? This is better for the integrity of the space. I think we're pretty good.
Yeah.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Testing, testing. Okay, please. Hello, guys. Thank you all for coming tonight. My name's Emmy Bernard. I'm the editor chief of the Central Focus. This evening, we'll be questioning the fourth candidate of the Francis House School District Board of Education, Stephen Blair, Adrianne Coon, Kelly Owens, and Samyala. So our, so our candidates have better understanding of their backgrounds and beliefs of this caucus, who are vying for two seats on the Francis House School District Board of Education. We encourage the audience to remain respectful throughout the night as the candidates answer the questions during our scheduled run candidate game. A couple weeks ago, candidates were sent, candidates were sent ten questions to respond to, which you can find on fhtoday.com. We've chosen from those questions here asked. We'll get through as many as we can until they can. In order to get through many audience questions and create a positive atmosphere, we have given everyone a note card. If you are so inclined, please write down a question you would like to ask of the candidates. Please write your name down on the card along with your question. Cards that do not have a name on them will not be charged away. After each candidate has finished their two-minute opening statement, we will collect those cards and select the questions which will be asked of the candidates. Cards will be chosen at random by our two classmates with supervision from the publications advisors, and then read by hosts. We will get through as many questions as we can. And now to start with the two minutes of opening. Good morning.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Stephen Blair. I'm running for Francis House School Board. Glad to see all of you. I'm a pastor. I've been a pastor for over twenty years. And I moved into this area a couple years ago because of the school district. Francis House School District is the number-one school district in St. Charles County, and that's why I moved, uh, and my whole family moved here. I would imagine that's why many of you moved here as well. Uh, as a pastor, I've had a lot of opportunities to work with people who would identify as red, blue, purple, or none of the above. I've been able to work with those people to, uh, respect them, uh, gather together, and get stuff done. And I bring that skill with me into this particular role. I've also had experience, uh, overseeing budgets, overseeing, um, human resources staffing-type issues, and those other issues that I still bring along with me. Uh, this Francis House School District has had a reputation associated with student success for decades. In order to last year, that started to change, and I worried. So I decided to run the school board, because I believe loving your neighbors includes giving seventeen thousand students the best education possible.
Really, really, my name is Sarah Owens. Um, I'm a lifelong St. Charles resident. I was since I was two. And I've been paying a lot of bills, but anyway, it's been a long time. Um, I went to school in, uh, in Francis House School District, then I went to Central, and then went for fifteen years. And the rest of my schooling, I gave to the city of St. Charles, where I'm a kind of a teacher. Uh, I taught schools for twenty-two years, and, uh, I've also had two children, I have three, that are also educators. They have uncles, aunts, cousins. We have over two hundred years of service to public education. An interesting story that kind of makes me do what I'm doing is about my mother. Uh, she began teaching in St. Charles. It was when, uh, schools were first integrated. Uh, right after Brown became the Board of Education. And thankfully, a few years ago, I thought to ask her, "How did you feel when you were teaching in one of the first integrated classrooms in America?" And she picked up for a few seconds, and she said, "You know, I was so happy, because I knew it was the right thing." So if that's the way I was raised, that I always do the right thing, I always try to do the right thing. Sometimes I make mistakes, but I try not to. When I try to help other people, they never do. Thank you.
Hello. Um, how are you doing? Thank you for coming. I think you're in the South Central, like, in the sky, high, or, like, you know, something to say. I, I've lived in St. Charles, huh, for a long time. I'm a lot of them, but I'm actually very happy to be here. And I'm considering serving the university. I've always felt that my subject's great, but it's been so few guys. I felt confident and prepared to succeed a new world of different things. And that's why whenever I started to look for a side, really, because I was a young woman, I chose Trinity. I chose Francis House specifically because of the education. And both my kids started their education in the academy, and how I do this is a unique thing, and my life is unique. So I think that the state of the state district, from all levels, that it's good. From elementary to middle to high school, and, um, I never got involved with schools, I, I started getting involved because this place was very diverse for me to sign up. And the district was trying to decide if they were going to still open a new school. This was August of twenty twenty, and I went to my first school. And I, you know, I always wanted my career to be in the university, and I really, like, I very lucky that this district decided to start again. But another reason I wanted to go to the academy was for all of the other communities to be in. I noticed that here they started opening, and there they were, so I wanted to study. Uh, it was a school district meant to just stay as a good as the state district ever could. And I knew it was a special opportunity for the community. I think mine, driving was not a good idea, and I'm embarrassed, because I don't remember.
Ten seconds.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Samyala.
Good evening, I am Sam Young, taking into our students to run this tonight. We're going to try, um, to be able to be more effective with the question board. I grew up going to public times, to public schools, grew up outside Winfield, on the other side of the state. Uh, the children too, uh, maybe on the two spots that they were doing. And then I went off to stay for many years in that state. Maybe spent that on suffering in the Pacific. And also there were lots of students playing, teaching classes and playing. Uh, freshman players, like, pretty much, like, I don't know. Uh, I think education has always been very important to us. In fact, the first board meeting I ever went to was in Hawaii, and the board was so small, eleven six table, and there was nothing else to do. Uh, I started going over to board meetings, and I realized early on in my career that by 20, that I got out right at twenty years, and my oldest would be starting ninth grade. It became a goal for us to let her have four years of a high school opportunity, she was at the school, about her, and just the, uh, the chance to be a civilian, I don't know, but, uh, we chose to move back to this area because of my family and, uh, my oldest now graduated from Francis Howe. Uh, and, uh, one, three more than I know of, ready to get to college. So, education is very important. I've had four board meetings, and, uh, doing twenty more in my career in this school district, and, uh, all of what happened in college. So, uh, before we turn you around, I'm passionate for this school to be good, and, uh, how it can help the community. Right, all of our, uh, communities.
Ten seconds. Now is the time for questioning. I'll be starting with Ms. Owens for the first question. And then the first question is, why do you want to be on the FHSD school board?
How about a vote? This one's definitely. Um, I decided that I needed to run up the school board because I'm passionate about public education. I think you can tell that from my background, from my experience and the way I was raised. But when I saw continuing ta- attacks against public schools and against public school teachers, I became very disturbed. When I heard, uh, public schools called trash, and I heard teacher unions called evil, that was a slap in the face. It was a slap in the face to me and my entire family, and all the teachers and students and schools in America. This is not the way we do business in public education in America. We love our neighbor. We care for every student that walks in the door. We hope for their success and we work for that, no matter what. The constant negative press coverage puts our district in a bad light. People won't want to come and live in this district, it's going to hurt property values, and it hurts teachers. Teachers feel like they have a target on their back, they don't feel like we have their back. And our students are afraid to speak their mind. That's not America. And that's why I'm running for the school board, because I believe in doing the right thing, and what I'm saying is the right thing. Thank you.
Okay, I'm running for the school board for multiple reasons. When I first started this journey, I had specific reasons like fiscal responsibility, parental rights, and increased academic standards. We've seen how those things were neglected over the past few years. Fiscal responsibility with the seventy-nine million howl more over expenditure. Parental rights were also stepped on whenever we were masked for two years, and when the school board during twenty twenty erroneously handed over the ability to make the decisions of whether we keep our schools open and our children masked to the superintendent. Our school board is elected by the citizens to represent our community, and they are elected officials. And in twenty twenty, when our board members handed over their responsibility to a singular entity, I was not happy with that, and a lot of other people were not happy with that. Even though we did stay open, there were decisions made that should not have been made, and many students were harmed by being masked for two years. I know so many parents who have told me their stories on that, so that's why I started to run. Parental rights, fiscal responsibility, and increased academic standards. Now, I still have those initiatives, but also, one thing that I've ran into, speaking with a lot of teachers, is that teachers are not enjoying working, not just here, but nationally. There's a lot of problems going on with discipline. Um, I have quotes from teachers that I cannot, "I cannot teach due to all disruptions, and I have lost my passion for this job." Kids do not receive consequences for disrupting the classroom, they get rewards. The good kids are overlooked for doing what all the kids should be expected to do. We have major problems that have been brewing. In two thousand twenty-one, we thought that was going to be our low point in academics, but in the past, two thousand twenty-two, decreased five percent. Two thousand twenty-three, our numbers also decreased five percent. And we need to get back on track with academics here and, uh, help support our teachers.
Helping people grow has been, uh, instilled in me from an early age. My mom was a public school teacher. I have a brother who's a public school teacher. I'm a father-in-law who's a graduate, uh, retired from a Winfield School District. And, you know, being in the Navy, I also had the opportunity to have many mentors that helped me along in my career, that I had a chance also to help many young sailors develop into, to leaders. That was the best part of being in the Navy for me, was really to, to work with the, uh, some of the best and brightest from our, uh, um, young generation, and to watch them take on responsibility, to, uh, see them mature, and to, and really just grow into mature citizens in this country. And, uh, that's something that's very dear to me. When I got, when we moved into this district, my daughter pulled me into, uh, our district-wide robotics team, and I got to spend the last four years working with our high school students on the robotics team. And I enjoyed doing that, watching these kids who had never, um, used heavy machinery in terms of blades and mills, and, and, uh, some of them didn't even know what, what ratchet or what the screwdrivers were. And then, and, and watching them build a robot from scratch was, uh, very rewarding. And I want to make sure that we offer those kind of opportunities to all of our students.
So when I moved here, I had every intention on just sitting back and enjoying the best school district in St. Charles County. I didn't choose a school district for me to get active, run for school board, and I just wanted to have the best school district. And then I saw things starting to change. Then I looked around and I noticed that the best school districts in the state of Missouri are not being ran the way that our school district is being ran. Look it up yourself, you can see that the other school districts are focusing on education. And over the last year, we've had a lot of focus on technical issues. We need to put education over politics. We need to be able to focus on student success and focus on it with laser focus and stop all the distractions. These a lot of distractions are actually causing us to lose teachers. Teachers who have said, uh, "This year's been very rough for our building." Teachers who have said, "Trusting teachers and not bad-mouthing them in public is what they like to see happen." The last few years, I've been a robotics coach, just like Sam had mentioned, at a middle school over at Barnum and Noble, myself, later. Last year, we were twenty-first out of twenty-four teams. Not very good, not very good at all. But most of those students stayed with us, and this last year went to state. And the ten people team had, uh, four different ethnicities, three or four different religions, including nonreligious. Different personalities, like a loud kid, with a quiet kid, uh, the kid whose medicine stopped at three thirty. And that became this microcosm of what public school education is, the best education for all students, and I want to be able to be part of it.
We'll continue with our next question. We'll start with Kim. Why are you the right person to be elected on the school board, to be elected on the school board and represent our students and community?
Thank you. Okay, so I am a mother of two in the district, so I have a vested interest in this district. I am also a previous stockbroker, a small business owner, and a graduate from Truman State University with a psychology degree. Now, all of those things on the surface, I think, I can see automatically how they will contribute significantly to add value into the school board. But a few months ago, while I started running for this position, it really hit me, the gravity of the situation, of how well-prepared I am for this role. There are many aspects to my life that I did not think would serve me any significant purpose, but, for instance, being a stockbroker. Um, what you might not know is when you become a stockbroker, you have to take a grueling seven-hour test called the Series Seven. And in that, you learn a lot of things that you don't need while on the board, like options and how to place trades and all types of stuff like this. But you do learn about bonds, and a significant amount of our revenue comes from bonds. I also know how to read financial statements in a flash. Uh, my experience with my psychology degree, something that I didn't realize until recently, um, was when you get your degree in psychology, you have to take a lot of courses on research and statistics. And why this is important is because I can look up research reports, I can look up statistics, and I think we need to focus on data-based research for our education going forward at Francis Howe.
Yeah, this is, uh, always something you, when you, what do you bring to a board? You know, why am I better than someone else? You know, um, trying to be very humble, I think, um, I'm no better than anybody else. I, I will say that I have, um, spent my entire life in leadership roles and seeking those out, always someone who steps forward for that. I, uh, I really want to ensure that we have proper leadership. What, what do I, what I bring to the board? Well, there's a lot of people that say because of my lack of background in education, that I don't have the training or the experience or the expertise to, to help guide the board, to provide a voice for the community. But I think what I bring is that I know what it takes to be successful outside of school. I know what it takes to be, um, to earn a engineering degree. I know what it takes to, um, deal with staffing issues, deal with personnel issues, uh, how to evaluate people that are going to get the job done, um, to, to work with people that are underperforming, and, and provide an environment where, uh, they can really reach their potential. All right, I'm not a big fan of firing people, I'm instead, you know, finding a use for everybody on the team, and, uh, making sure that we all have a place, and getting the best performance that we can to people that we want. Thank you.
So there's an exercise where I would walk down either of these two aisles, and I would take a book and start spinning it towards the back door. Everybody on this side of the spinning book will swear that book is spinning counterclockwise. And everybody on this side of the book will swear that it's spinning clockwise. And a lot of times, the truth of the matter is largely dependent upon where you're sitting. And what that means is if there's a board member who is aware that a lot of times it's our perspective that we bring with us that helps us understand this version or that version, that this angle, that angle of the situation, they're able to better, uh, bring people together and look at each other and the situation from each other's point of view as well. Uh, I want to be involved with bringing people together. Uh, that means the red, blue, purple, none of the above folks. Uh, I want to be able to represent all of them, uh, to be able to come together and advocate for whatever the solution is that needs to happen. It's a red solution, a blue solution, a purple solution, as long as it's a solution that focuses on students and their education, and I'm going to work down supporting it. I also have experience dealing with a lot of conflict, uh, being able to have people who are in conflict work together, whether it's a different person-to-person, one-on-one, or different groups. It's important for us to be able to have a very big district like this, uh, to be led by a board that has the ability to bring conflict and people in conflict together to solve conflicts.
Well, as I stated before, I'm a retired educator, with thirty-two years of classroom experience. I have a bachelor's degree in music education. I have middle school certification, and I have a master's degree in education administration. So I know something about how schools are supposed to work. I've taught at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. After I retired from teaching, I didn't like being retired very much, so I decided to follow another passion and became a church music administrator, which was very rewarding. Now, when I think back about teaching and all the things I did, all the jobs I juggled, I worked on a stage like this, did musicals, took kids on field trips, some of them were not a good idea, my husband told me, but I did it anyway because I wanted my kids to experience things that they wouldn't experience if I didn't help them do it. And it wasn't always easy. But I know how to collaborate, and that's what a school board should be doing. It should be collaborating, not dictating what we're supposed to think, and what students are supposed to think, and what teachers are supposed to think. I wrote curriculum many times. I understand the process, I've done the process, it takes a long time. So, one other thing I want to say is, I am not beholden to a political party. I didn't take an endorsement or money from a political party because schools should be nonpartisan. Thank you.
Can we take a, um, take a quick break to collect the note cards from the audience? Just wave them up in the air. And that question is, over the last, uh, last several years, the board of education has had to or decided to struggle with issues relating to COVID-19, bathroom policies, controversial literature, and racism, to, to name a few. What do you think the board's role is when it comes to these issues?
Yeah, I think that all of those issues have caused a lot more people to pay attention to our local school board elections than, uh, previously. And, uh, but I, I think the board dealing with all of those issues was necessary. I think they were brought before the board because the community had concerns about each of those. And, and so it was appropriate for all of those things to be discussed openly. The, the board is supposed to make decisions, you know, in open meetings, the, the, and the rationale should be available for everybody to see, uh, to take community input. They're elected by the community, and they, uh, they, uh, represent the community and the schools. And so, I think it was good that all those things were addressed by our school board. And I, um, you know, I graduate and, and, and happy that these school boards in the past have, have, have dealt with those things. Uh, I have not always agreed with, uh, how they were dealt with, but I think they made some, uh, good decisions. As Adrian, I mentioned before, the, the decision to keep the school open, um, for in-person during COVID, when a lot of other school districts were not, are, has turned out to have been the right decision. Um, you know, all the evidence is pointing to that in-person learning is very valuable. And, uh, that was the right decision, and I think it took community pressure and, uh, the community voice of its concern to make sure that happened.
Okay, so over the last several years, the board of education has had to or decided to struggle with issues relating to COVID-19, bathroom policies, controversial literature, and racism. What do you think the board's role is when it comes to these issues?
I want to agree with something Adrian said earlier, she talked about data-based research, and I think that's the way to start. Whenever there's a big issue, we need to be able to, uh, base your decisions based upon as much data as possible, um, and be able to affirm the facts are our friends and embrace it that way. That said, leadership also creates culture. And the higher the temperature is in the room, the more important it is for the leaders to be calm, to be able to speak in ways that embraces the wide variety of people that this board is served, is called to serve. That means not disparaging, uh, teachers, um, especially by name, online. It, it means, um, not attacking, uh, other staff members. We have to create the culture. And if the people who are elected to represent the board can't handle conflict, then they shouldn't be able to be part of the board. We have to be able to lead by how we treat kindness, how we, uh, find opportunities to not, uh, especially open and criticize staff, uh, to follow the code of ethics that a board member is called to lead and follow. And then by following our example, hopefully we're able to navigate some very tough issues, because there's tough issues we need addressing. And while they've been discussed, uh, as Sam just mentioned, it has been discussed, a lot of those issues have not been really addressed, but they've been touched on.
Ten seconds.
And we need to do a better job of addressing them together with the right attitude.
I don't think a lot of the issues that have come forth lately, uh, were necessary. I think it's taken our focus on what's real, talk of what's real. Uh, what's real is teachers are leading the profession. In Missouri, sixty-two percent of new teachers leave the profession within the first five years. School safety is dear to my heart, because I hate worrying every day if my grandchild or my children will come home from school safe that day. Kids have that worry, and they, they shouldn't live in fear. And also, we should be respecting what's the teachers, the work the teachers have done, their education, their experience. We need to trust them, because nobody's in it for the wrong, none of these teachers are in it for the wrong reason. All these schools even that I've been to, the teachers are so awesome, and the kids show it. Show it by their achievement, by the smiles on their faces. And they're feeling attacked, and they don't deserve that. A school board should be serving the community, not serving a political party. They should be overseeing the business of the district, not dictating the business of the district. We need to put trust and respect back on the school board. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, I'm just going to start directly answering the question. Uh, what do you think the school board's role is when addressing these issues, COVID, bathroom policies, controversial literature, and racism? I think it is imperative that the school board addresses these issues. This is the school board's job, to make sure that policies are created and implemented across our schools that reflect the citizens of our community. That is really the role of the school board. It's to govern our public education system, because we citizens fund the public education in our community, and it is not only our right, but it is our responsibility to make sure education in our public schools is proper. And, um, so yes, it is the board's role to make sure that we relate issues, we address issues related to COVID-19, bathroom policies, controversial literature, and racism. Yes, these are things we should directly address on the board.
Moving on to the next question, we'll start with, this is a book, and it will be, how would you respond to the backlash for a vote you made that was unpopular?
There are times when leadership needs making a decision that everybody's going to be, um, okay with. In order to lead in those moments, a leader better have a full set of data that they've used, they could point to and say, "This is what drove me, this is my moral compass, this is, this is what I referred to." Uh, for me, my moral compass is my faith, but it does not have to be everybody's moral compass. But my moral compass is, is, uh, centered on the idea that each student is still to be measurable. When there's a vote that requires some kind of conflict, some kind of bringing stakeholders together, the leaders need to be able to say, "This is where I came from," and point to it. Sometimes, over the last couple of years, there's been a lot of evidence pointing to that we were able to say, "This is why we did this, and that was helpful." And recently, there's been some decisions that have been made that have not had clear-cut, uh, data, clear-cut examples, and that created a lot more confusion and chaos than it deserved or recovered.
Okay, whenever there's a vote, there are going to be unhappy people, every time. But if you make your decision in the correct way, if you collaborate with the people involved, students, teachers, parents, education professionals, those that have expertise in whatever it is, and you do it for the right reasons, then I, I would be okay with criticism. Uh, as a teacher, you know, my students didn't always like all my decisions, but I was always doing it for their best, so that things would turn out good for them, and they would be successful. You can't just jam something down somebody's throat, you have to bring them on board. The change process takes time. I learned about that in graduate school. You have to bring people on board, and you follow a timeline, and sometimes it takes longer than you think. But you allow people time to digest the change. And change is happening around us all the time, and we have to learn how to make changes effectively and bring people on board, not just telling you, "This is what you do."
Okay, how would I respond to an unpopular vote? First, before making a vote on the school board, I would take in consideration as much input as possible from our entire district, all of the citizens, all of the parents, all of the teachers, the administration, and I would take in as much information as I can. And then, when I made the decision for the vote, I would make it based on a representation of what I think the community at large wants and what is best for the district. So if I make a decision that is an unpopular decision, I will listen after to any new information or input that is provided to me. And if I make a decision and a few years later, um, or even a few months later, if there's information that comes forward that shows me that maybe my decision wasn't the best decision, then I would reconsider and bring it up to the board again. Um, this, something that did happen in two thousand twenty-one was the removal of the challenge courses. We've removed advanced classes for the sake of equity. Yes, that should be reconsidered by the board, because that was a bad move. We are having worse, um... We are having worse, worse outcomes for our math. Is that a result? Possibly. So I would reevaluate everything on a continual basis because that's what you need to do while you're on board.
There's a part of me that says I would not make an unpopular vote with the general public. And I would say that only because, not to be flippant, but it's more of, you know, I'm trying to present during this campaign, everything I think I'm going to do. I'm trying to be as open about that as I can. And I will feel obligated if elected to vote that way, to operate that way. I also believe in, you know, doing my research to dig into the issues. I believe in communicating and interacting with those who are going to be affected by a vote. And, you know, in the Navy, we have this phrase, "Walking the deck legs." That means you got to get out of your office, you got to get away from your desk, you got to get away from the paperwork, and you got to walk around. You got to talk to people, you got to see how things are going. I worked for this great admiral who, you know, two stars, and he would walk around every day and talk to, you know, kids who just got out of high school and had put on a good form, all the way up to people who'd been in the Navy twenty-six years. You know, and he, you know, you got to get out there and walk. I get out there, find out what's going on on the ground, and that's going to tell you really the health of your organization. So...
Ten seconds.
You know, that's how you avoid making something that's totally unpopular. And you will have things that are unpopular. I think there were a lot of backlash from some people who keep their schools open in person, but that was the right decision. I'm glad we made it.
For this next question, we'll start with Owens. Do you agree with the current board's decision to remove and then reinstate the Black Literature and Black History classes from the high school curriculum?
No, I did not agree with that. These were elective courses and they were removed without any discussion. That is inappropriate in a public school. We have curriculum writers. They weren't consulted. Our board said, "We don't need to consult them. We've made up our mind." That isn't the way public schools work. I thought it seemed kind of sneaky to put it on the agenda twenty-four hours before the meeting. Kind of a surprise, but I think we could see it coming because when we saw the resolution against racism and discrimination we made, we knew there would be more to come. I think our Black community is feeling attacked and it didn't have to happen. I think we need to collaborate before we make decisions like that with all seven board members. Everyone should be aware that something like that's going to happen so that we can discuss it and decide if we really want to do that. So no, I don't agree with that. I think it caused a lot of problems. If you don't collaborate, you'll cause chaos.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure. Did you say the board's decision to remove and then reinstate the Black History and Black Literature courses? Because that's not entirely accurate. Because the board, the board removed the social justice teaching standards from the curriculum and it was always the administration's sole responsibility and decision to keep those classes available for enrollment. Whenever those courses were first developed, they were on enrollment January of 2021 and the curriculum and standards were not approved until June of 2021. So even though the policy changed after that point, the administration had full ability to, especially since this was a controversial issue, to discuss it and keep those available for enrollment, which is what they did. So I support the administration's decision to keep the classes available for enrollment. And I also support the board's decision to remove the classes, or the board's decision to remove the social justice teaching standards that were set by the Southern Poverty Law Center. Because the Southern Poverty Law Center is not an unbiased, is not an unbiased source for academic standards in our schools. And it's a political activist group that we should not allow in Francis Howe School District.
Yeah, I think Adriana and I are going to agree a lot on this one. I really see the question more as, should we have ever used the Southern Poverty Law Center's social justice standards to build classes around it? You know, they should not have been used to develop our classroom curriculum. The Southern Poverty Law Center is a political activist organization. And we saw that when in the group that organized the walkout, you know, they claimed that you cannot teach Black History without political activism. You can't have that politically neutral. But that's not true. If the SBLC standards had never been used to build those classes, those classes would have continued uninterrupted. You know, it was really that curriculum standards that was the problem. And, you know, those standards reflect political activism and they were not appropriate for use in our schools. Our kids are going to be better off because what's happening is those classes are being rewritten and they're going to be politically neutrally, politically neutral. They're going to be academically focused. They're going to provide a lot more information, a lot more depth to these kids. It's going to be a better class for everybody than what was provided before. So to me, it is an improvement overall for what we're offering our kids.
Previous question was, how do you handle controversial votes? I would say do the exact opposite of the board did for this vote, the Black History, Black Literature vote. We knew it was coming. Elections have consequences. The majority had this as a priority and after they removed the anti-racism resolution, what they could have done is said, "We're going to do this. We want to keep about ninety-five percent of it. We're going to work with the curriculum committee and then we'll make sure by January fifteenth, everything is still on target. We'll agree on ninety-five percent and we could have done it that way." But instead, it was brought up at the last moment, twenty-four hours ahead of the December twenty-first meeting. It was accused that it was organizations that were the ones doing the walkout. The students led the walkout. And on January the fifteenth, a political action committee, you guys do want to use the term "political action committee." The political action committee at Francis Howe Families posted and called their supporters to email the district to make sure you students got in trouble. They were more interested in punishing you for speaking out than they were in listening to you. So when it comes to how do we handle controversial topics, it's the exact opposite of this board did. There is five, ten different things they could have done, be more reasonable, be more collaborative, but it was punitive. That's not what a school board is supposed to do or not how they're supposed to do it. Look at the answers and see the chronology of the events and you can see the other different things that could have been done differently along the way. Collaborate, do the exact opposite of what the board did, the battery did.
Starting here, my next question is, what are some specific changes you hope to make and how will these changes impact students in the classroom?
That's a good question. I really want more teacher cooperation and teacher involvement because I've been talking to a lot of teachers and teachers' voices aren't being heard. And I feel like we need to bring in input from our teachers through all types of surveys and even forums with the board because we need direct information from our teachers of what's going on in our classes because we're having a significant decline in academics. And the way we're going to solve that is by creating a better classroom environment because that's where it all starts, with the feet on the ground in the classroom. So I'm hoping we can take some actionable steps towards creating a better classroom environment. And so I'd like to start there with the board. I'd also really like to increase academic standards. So looking at the curriculum and seeing where we can improve, looking at the data because we have mountains of empirical data at our hands. And that's one thing that we're not fully utilizing. We're not looking at ways that we can improve. Instead, I feel like other parties are happy to just go along with the status quo and we have to make sure to set high standards and improvements for our children so that they can succeed in everything that comes to them for their future. We need to set the bar high at Francis Howe.
Yeah, I've talked to many teachers during this campaign and before about what's going on in the district. And, you know, one of the things they talk about most often is dealing with disrespect and disruption in class. They talk about, when they talk to their administrators about a student and there's no action taken, there's no follow-up, there's no communication. They talk about dealing with disruption that they don't get support from. They talk about the feeling that administrators would take a student's word over what happened, over what the teacher was saying happened in the classroom. I don't understand how that happens. These are adults versus our kids. I mean, I know my kid and he tells me about what happened in the classroom. Generally check with a teacher to find out, like, is that really what happened, you know? And, you know, I don't understand how the administrators being around their teachers can allow that kind of environment. The teachers talk about a toxic environment where in some classrooms where they can't have a disruption dealt with. I think we have to provide the support. We need to look at, we have a code of conduct that I think is fairly clear. You always improve it, but I think it needs to be fairly equally applied to all. I think that will improve conditions for our students also to reduce the bullying out there and provide a safer environment for them and less disruption with their classroom.
This election is going to be about teachers. If we don't get this right, nothing else is going to matter. Right now, this has been a destination district for decades. Teachers have wanted to come here for the same reason you wanted to come here. For the last year, that has started to change. There are teachers who are leaving Francis Howe for other school districts. Before, Zonwall board members said that they are picking off teachers left and right from Francis Howe and Winfield. If we don't get this figured out and do the support that is being discussed here, but actually do it for the teachers, the hundreds of teachers that I have met when I've walked the walk, when I went to Cosley and Harvest Ridge and every high school, basketball games, football games, trivia nights, bitching up trivia nights that started getting repeat questions. You know that the former name for Google was "backrub"? That's a weird question. Came up more than once. And I've talked to the teachers and what they want more than anything else is to stop being attacked by the school board, to stop being called bloopers, indoctrinators, and people who are sexualizing children. Do you want to work for a company that would call you those things? Like, if you had two businesses, one called you that and one didn't call you that, which one would you choose? There are people who had a chance to put in a resume for this school district and they essentially didn't even though they lived closer and that was their dream for years. Number one thing we could do in the classroom is support the teachers from the top down, beginning the board. Because otherwise, we're going to have a huge problem with student success, student scores. Teachers decrease, class sizes increase, scores decrease. We have to change that right away.
A couple of specific changes I would like to make, and I could be wrong. They might be in place in some schools that I don't know because I don't know everything about the district yet. I would like to see every school have a committee that works together on school climate. As we all know, taught in different schools like I have, every school is not equal to another school on school climate. We want our teachers happy. We want our students happy. We want our parents happy while they are achieving. So if we could have a committee in each school of volunteers that would include students, parents, teachers, administrators, and concerned citizens. If we could have groups like that to work together so that everyone has a good experience in the classroom and wants to come back the next day, I think that would be awesome. Another thing I would like to see happen is an ongoing school safety committee because we know how things change all the time. We think we have safe schools in place, but do we? I think we need to look at outside from, get help from outside experts that know how schools can become safer. For example, the Violence Project, which comes in and helps schools determine if they are as safe as they can be. That's a high priority with me because number one, our students should be safe. And of course, I want to work on improved teacher salaries. It looks like teachers are getting a large raise. Some teachers next year will be getting a one percent raise. It's not equal. And the teachers with the most education and the most years deserve better.
We'll start with Younger for this question. This will be our last question of these questions. What is something our district does that makes you proud?
I already alluded to this once, but I think one of the things that I think public school does and that this district excels in is offers so many opportunities for our students to grow in, in something like this, you know, in journalism. Tonight, there was a basketball, boys' basketball game, there was a baseball game, there was women's soccer. And beyond that, there's all kinds of clubs that they can be in. For me personally, I already mentioned the high school robotics. You know, that was always kind of a weird mix. You had young men who were really big on working on their cars and then a lot of young women who were going into engineering. You know, so you had this kind of mix of like gearheads and academic elites like coming together, robotics team. And then, you know, there were other people that kind of fit in between that range. But working together and putting that robot together. And then it's groups like that that really provide opportunities for our kids that they're going to take on out of here. You know, for me personally, it was moving around a lot in the Navy and then getting through four years with my oldest daughter in that club. And last year, she was the president and just to see her take on leadership responsibilities. And now she's studying engineering out at Oklahoma State and just really thriving. You know, it's those kind of opportunities. I saw that happen with my daughter. And the fact that we continue to operate so, offer so many opportunities to all the kids in the district. That's what I'm proud of this district for.
I'm proud of all the different ways that the staff shows up for people. Proud of Becky and Esmeralda. They are two microstaudians at Barnwell. There should be four, but every night they work twice as hard. Really thankful for Becky and Esmeralda today. Thankful for every teacher who is providing, creating the number one school district in St. Charles County against the odds, in many ways being the least compensated down on steps. I want to celebrate all the extracurriculars, just like Sam had just mentioned. Whether it's middle school robotics, it would be nice to build it in all middle school. Some of them are available but not happening yet. The FHC wrestling state championship, the Francis Howe High football championship. There's excellence happening in teamwork in sports. I've had a chance to see a bunch of art along the way, the high school art fair, the Dr. Doolittle Jr., Music Man Jr. And there's a lot of talented people from the top to the bottom of this school district, from high schools to elementary. And we have a lot to celebrate, the number one school district in St. Charles County.
Okay, I guess something that's really impacted me is to see the feeling of unity in the schools that I've visited and all the events that I've attended. To see those music students, of course, I love that since I was a music teacher. And I see them so enthralled in what they're doing and you can see that in their faces. And I know they're going to go on to keep doing music. And that's what it's about, is a teacher wants their student to go on and keep doing that thing, keep learning, keep growing. But besides the spirit of unity, I've also seen the inclusive nature from the beautiful sign in front of Henderson to the posters we see on the walls in the schools. When Cosley had the event for the firefighters. And, you know, they just did it out of goodness of their hearts. And these teachers leave this because their passion is helping students grow. And you have the overabundance of that. And you have the overabundance of that in this district. And I just, I want to help the teachers because I care and I want everyone to feel welcome and celebrated and feel like they belong.
I have a really unique aspect of seeing Francis Howe because my kids have been in Francis Howe for the past 10 straight years. My son and now my daughter too. And wow, there's so much to be proud of, but I would say the biggest thing that I think Francis Howe should be proud of is our community in elementary school, which now I had kids in Daniel Boone for 10 years straight, because when my son left, my daughter was there. So 10 years straight at elementary school and it is fantastic. From every single teacher to all the staff, to the principal, to the custodians, every, to the SROs. Every single person there is amazing and all the interactions there create such a sense of community that we really feel like we know each other and care about each other. And then as my son moved to middle school and now he's in high school, I saw the aspect of the community building at each school building. And now in high school, there's so many opportunities like Sam was talking about with robotics and football. My son's in football, there's so many sports, journalism, all of these aspects that really build a sense and a feeling of community and and I really think that that is the best thing at Francis Howe that all of our schools. And I don't want to say just my elementary school because I talked to other people. And it's just because I went, I've been at Daniel Boone for so long that I understand and see that there. But other people from other elementary schools tell me the same thing. So it is universal across all of our schools, not just my schools that I've had children in times. And I think that that is something we should be very proud of and it's something I'm grateful that my children have been involved in our schools for so long. It's been amazing.
The period for questioning is now over. I'm going to have some of my FHC publications friends ask some of the questions that you guys wrote on the note cards.
Hello, everybody. All right. So Chase Peay said, Ms. Kuhn and Mr. Young, do you guys truly believe that the CRT, political activism, and men and women's restroom concerns you have are factual? I'm currently a student in the district and have never seen any news at my school. Do you believe that the CRT, political activism, and men in women's restroom concerns you have are factual?
Men in women's restrooms are factual? I guess I do believe that CRT, political activism, and boys in girls' restrooms and locker rooms is factual. Because yeah, that these are things that we're dealing with. These are things that we're dealing with on a building level, especially I'll just start with girls in boys' restrooms and locker rooms and boys' and girls' restrooms and locker rooms. There's not currently a policy in place at Francis Howe. So it's done by a building-to-building basis. And I think that we need to have standards and set guidelines for what our district thinks. And those things need to be voted on by the elected officials that are elected by the citizens in this district. So yes, the CRT, I was adamantly opposed to the Southern Poverty Law Center writing our curriculum and standards in our courses. Yes, that's a real thing that did happen. And political activism, well, the Southern Poverty Law Center is a political organization. So yes, those are things that are happening in our schools and they do need to be addressed by the board because that's our role.
Yeah, I mean, we know they're real because parents are coming to talk to us. Parents are pulling kids out of the district because of unhappiness with the school policy on these. We know about this because parents complain to us about what their kids are being taught sometimes in school. So we know it's a concern. You know, the board administrator teachers should be focused on giving our students a great knowledge base that will allow them to be successful in the future. You know, I think we're misleading our students if we tell them they should be focused on DEI or CRT or political activism over academics. Some people thought it was a great thing that students were walking out of school. I do not agree with that, you know, that I think their focus should be on academics. And that's what they should be doing during school time. You know, I think DEI is a powerful movement that has totally pervaded the educational system at large. And I believe in diversity, but I'm talking about diversity in its broadest form. We're talking about diversity of viewpoints, ethnicity, race, experience, socioeconomic background, and more, you know. But that's not what DEI has become. It's a, it's not about diversity in its purest form. But it's a political advocacy movement on behalf of certain groups that want to divide people into oppressors and oppressed. And when you examine DEI and its ideological heritage, I don't think it is inherently consistent with basic American values. And I don't think it should be in the schools. And you know, I support Policy 2116 for those who are in my opinion on the back end.
Given here the word political activism, there's a PAC that endorses the two of you. PAC stands for Political Action Committee. The people who are part of Political Action Committee are political activists. Just like the other side has Francis Howe Forward as a Political Action Committee. And so you can say that every single one of us is connected to political activism. And so this whole off this idea that some people are political activists and you guys are, it's not accurate. There's also references that another group, the Southern Poverty Law Center, that they are a national group that's politically motivated. And so we are like Moms for Liberty. And Moms for Liberty is a group that endorsed the current vibe. I'm not sure both of you or one of you, I don't know whether. But just be able to make sure we're naming the fact that if they're trying to paint a picture as if other people are following national voices and you two aren't, that is false and misleading and needed to be set out.
I'm with them. I said pretty much what I'm thinking, but I did want to address social justice. I'll try not to cry because that's why I joined my church. Because they practice the principle of social justice and that had been missing in my life. I believe everybody should have a fair shot in our society and that's what social justice is. There's nothing devious. It's about caring for each other and lifting each other up. That's all it is. And I would never apologize for loving it.
Our next question is from Haley Rindman. Do you support the idea of school vouchers? In other words, do you support public funds going to private institutions?
This is something that is decided on by our legislature. So there's currently a bill going through and there's been other multiple bills for I think the past 20 years that have been shot down. So me personally, it's not a school board role, but I would want to make sure that our district is as strong as possible, even without the vouchers. Even if vouchers don't come for 20 years, I want our school as competitive as possible because people are leaving for private school and homeschooling right now. And we're seeing that because we're having a decline in enrollment and stagnant enrollment for 10 years even though the population is growing. I want to bring back about political activism because the opponents are endorsed by the NEA, which is a political group. And whenever you asked about Policy 2116 and if that's going on, here's some of the resolutions that the people who do endorse, my opponents, do want to happen in our school. These are resolutions, which is an action plan that they want to happen. They want to ensure that all transgender students have access to the bathroom or locker room of their choice. I don't agree with that. That's, I stated that clear, clearly. Also, they believe that racial and social equity principles should be implemented on all levels of policymaking. What that looks like is to remove advanced classes for the sake of equity, like happened in 2021. Those were removed across all types of districts, not only just here in Missouri. I was just talking to a board member of another school district, Rockwood, and they also removed the challenge classes and advanced classes the same time we did because these are national initiatives that are being pushed by the NEA. So whenever we talk about, are we running against Carol Lee Owens and Steve, we're not. We're running against the NEA because they endorse Carol Lee and Stephen Owen, or Carol Lee and Steve. So Stephen went. So also another thing, another resolution, which means they want to make action. 10 seconds, okay. Okay, so another thing that they do want to push for is, well, I'll just, since my time's up, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you since your mic was out.
Well, all I have to say about that is they're running against teachers. If you're running against the NEA, you're running against teachers.
Public funds for public schools, easy answer.
What is your answer? You didn't hear it.
Oh. Public funds for public schools.
We are seeing stagnant, you know, growth in our student population. And yet, you know, as was mentioned, the population is growing in our district. Why aren't we attracting more people to our, why aren't more parents putting their kids in our district? You know, I want this district to be competitive and
Answer the question. Thank you.
Yeah, I get 90 seconds, thanks. I want us to be competitive no matter what happens. I am not going to advocate for school vouchers or school choice. You know, my focus is going to be on the school district. So if you elect me, that's going to be my focus, all right? I'm not going to be advocating for that down in Jeff City, right? So that's, that's, that's what, the way I will act on the board is to focus on us and make sure we're competitive no matter what happens.
Hi folks, I'm Mr. Pat. I am the Publications Advisor here at Howell Central. I don't mind clapping, I don't mind booing. If we're going to get any rowdier than we just got, we will finish the next 20 minutes with the few young ladies up here asking the questions. And you all will go outside into the auditorium into the crowd. Okay, I'm not letting it get any further and further out of control. Not trying to pick on any one side here, just want to give each of the candidates a fair chance to be heard. That is our job here tonight. So please pay attention to that rule, that stipulation, or we will wind up just clearing the auditorium. Thanks.
All right, this next question comes from Caroline Duncan. The current board has shared that a contract will provide an average 9% raises for teachers. This is great, but expenses and still doesn't catch them up with all missed steps. Our current surplus will run out in a couple of years. Will you support a tax levy to fund our operating expenses? If not, how will we continue to pay them?
Right now, we have a 30% operating expense reserve. The minimum required for our district is 15%. We haven't seen this percentage of operating expense reserves in a decade. So right now, I don't see a need for a tax levy or an increase in our revenue. We're also, we have a lot of things that bring in revenue to our schools. It is property values, which I, the St. Charles County Realtors Association cannot endorse for their policy. But I did receive a financial donation from them because they believe I am the best candidate to preserve property values here in Francis Howe. So that's one thing I wanted to share. When property values are increased, we receive more revenue. Another thing is that we're, oh, the 9% raise. I think the contract also includes a missed salary step increase, which, people who might not know, teachers missed their salary step increases from 2014 to 2018 and one other time, so five years, in the past 10 years. When the majority of the board was endorsed by the NEA, they missed five salary step increases. It took until 2021, when two board candidates were endorsed by Francis Howe Families, to get even one of those salary step increases to get reinstated. And now this year, there will be a second salary step increase reinstated if that gets pushed through, if that's what gets decided on. So it took until board members were elected by citizens in our community. Francis Howe Families is a grassroots organization that's built on thousands of parents, citizens in the district. And I am proud to be endorsed by Francis Howe Families and the Republican Central Committee and to get donations from St. Charles County Realtor Association. Also, I have endorsements from many, many elected officials and many, many people who are very important and have relevant roles in our community. So I'm very proud of all of my endorsements, especially Francis Howe Families. Thank you.
Can you read the question again?
Yes, it's in my desk card pile. Let me just go find it in a second. Do you support The current board has shared that a contract will provide an average 9% raise for teachers. This is great, but expensive and still doesn't catch them up with all missed steps. Our current surplus will run out in a couple of years. Will you support a tax levy to fund our operating expenses? If not, how will we continue to pay them?
The current surplus is connected less to the financial management of the current board. It's connected more to this event fall of money that came in when all of our property values became inflated. Doing the right thing to increase the teacher salary, right? I think part of leadership is if you agree with somebody, even if they're your opponent, you say it. So I appreciate that happening. To be able to say that it was because they wanted to and the other people didn't want to is overly simplistic. Not accurate, and if you have conversations with teachers, you'll be able to find that out. I do want to say that the amount of money we have in reserves is at 30% now. And there's a graph showed by our financial treasurer that that number is going to be depleted and really smaller in the next three or four years. I'm curious what the current board is planning on doing with that information. Right now, I don't know if I would support it or not. Because I don't know what the financial situation is going to be in a couple of years. But I know that leadership requires making tough decisions, tough conversations. That's why we did Prop S. And the board needs to be able to make tough decisions financially and Thank you.
I think it's significant, once again, when we talk about having the 30% of reserves. The district is generally operated around 15% and generally struggled to get that. It's been over a decade since we've been able to offer a raise of this amount. And the other thing is we're doing a two-year contract, the district is. And they're meeting the step, the regular step this year, and then also restoring the step. And they're meeting the step, the regular step this year, and then also restoring the step. Um, I think this really just shows um, great leadership from our superintendent, from our chief financial officer, our current finance director. We're all generally do, we're around for many of the um, the, the pay freezes that the district had to go through in the past. Think uh, that makes us competitive. We talked about providing a good environment for teachers. We have to pay the, a lot of this weight, as someone pointed out, a lot of the pay raises is going to newer teachers. Um, and we are, we had, we saw it for, for a teacher in the first three years in the district, 81.6. I think that's a retention rate, that's a great, you know, in the singles area, that's like tops and near the tops of what, of being able to retain new teachers. We are having a lot of teachers leave. That is a problem, not just in our district, that is nationwide.
10 seconds.
And it is, we have to be competitive, we're going to have to offer competitive pay. So where do we go from here? I, I believe that we have better leadership in our finance department right now. And I'm only, once again, trust them. I do not think that we're going to call for a tax levy this year or probably next year based on the current finances. And then we, we have to see where our financial leadership takes us. Thank you.
Um, if you'd like to answer also, um, if a tax levy is necessary, I'm always in favor of it. I vote for every tax levy there is because I want teachers to be paid where they work. I believe in paying it forward. Someone paid for me and I believe in paying for the next person.
Uh, this question was from Melanie Reckin. She asks, what experience do you have that you could bring to the table in helping to retain teachers?
Yeah, um, I've been a part of many groups that uh, um, provided a great work environment. I know what it's like to work in a, um, something that provides support to you. I know what it's like to have a, a program of mentorship. I know what it's like to have, where you, from the top down, people are supported in their job. Um, I know what it's like to deal with when someone is struggling and they, they come to you for help. And uh, you have to provide that help. On the board, I don't get to do that one-on-one, it's going to be, um, so we're going to have to figure out a way from the board to ensure that everybody's supported. And that's through policies, it's through um, making a good working relationship with a superintendent and staff. It means um, sitting in there with call upon committees and to actively work with our school administrators to figure out what their, or their building administrators, to figure out what each building, what is their need, what are their circumstances? What do they need, what can we provide them? How do they want the budget set up for that year? Um, I, I'm prepared to spend time doing that. I'm prepared to, to talk to the principals, I'm prepared to talk to the teachers. I'm prepared to talk and collaborate with our superintendent. And it's this, this, this focus on making sure that we have a good working environment, that people are paid. And, and I'll just say this real quick, in the Navy, I got the same kind of schedule that the teachers have, right? I, based on my years of service and where I was, and I had an expectation that that was going to grow up every year. Uh, we have to budget that in. Um, and this is really why so many teachers have reached out to myself and Adriana. And um, you know, I'm proud to say that I am teacher-supported also in this round. Thank you.
What experience do you have that you could bring to the table in helping to retain teachers?
I don't. Um, okay, so with my background in finance, that is one thing that I will directly bring to the board, to the board for the teachers because I'll make sure um, that we follow a strict budget and that we put our money where it is most needed, in the teacher salaries. Because they are the ones teaching our children. And it is very important that we make sure they don't miss their scheduled salary steps. That's a horrible thing, like Sam just said. Uh, he expected to get raises, so do they. That's what they expect, that's the role they take on here. And we should support them financially. And for us to do that, we need to take back control of our budget and make sure that we're making the right financial decisions so we have the funds to fund the teacher salaries. Um, another thing, I'm a very empathetic person. I listen to people really well, um, I collaborate with people well. I care a lot about all types of people, everyone. Um, I think we are all equal and I, on the board, I will listen to all the citizens' opinions, all of the teachers' opinions, all the administrators' opinions, all the parents' opinions, and even students' opinions. And create an environment that really supports the teachers. So um, like I said earlier, I want, I want to have more teacher collaboration and I know I can provide that. Um, the other thing, I'm just really prepared to take on this role and I know the teachers will feel that. I'm already setting up appointments to start talking with them over the summer because I want to get as much teacher input and improve our schools from the feet on the ground all the way up. So, thank you.
Okay, I guess what I bring to the table on that is I actually did negotiate for teacher salaries and his teaching and benefits. Um, I've seen the long key salary schedules because every year, it can get longier and longer in a different area. So it's very difficult with the money you're given to give everyone a fair raise. That's why a tax levy might be necessary. But when I hear um, from teachers that they may only get $170 next year, whereas another teacher may get by thousand, uh, you can see where there would be some uh, issues with that and not feeling valued. So I think everybody deserves a fair raise. And when you just give a blanket number, 9%, that's really not factual of what everybody's getting. And we need to look more into making it fair and equitable for everyone.
So there's two different ways that we can uh, really support the teachers. One is their face, we see them, that means listening, that means supporting them, showing up at their activities. You know, the word courage has the same etymology as the word cardiology. And to encourage somebody means to find somebody whose heart is on the floor and help them take that heart and place it back in their heart, into their chest and say, "You're wonderful, you're great." And right now, there's a bunch of teachers who are really beaten up over the last year. And if we're going to support them, it begins with encouraging them. It begins with saying, "I see what you're going through, it's not fair and it's not right, and we have to change this culture right away." So to their face, that means telling each teacher, "We appreciate you, listen." Many of you have already had those conversations before. I want to make sure there's not a false equivocation. There's a huge difference in the amount of teachers who are supporting the two of you and teachers who are supporting the two of us. There's a huge difference in the numbers. Yeah. Uh, well, that's right, um, there's a huge difference in the amount of teachers who are supporting the two of you and two of us. One of the best ways you can support teachers is vote for Carol Lee and I. I want to be able to say this one last time.
10 seconds.
That's right, I'm going to, it means also standing up against the voices that are calling teachers' names. And this is an opportunity, the two of you have said you would support teachers. And I believe the words you said, I really do, I believe you mean those words. I believe when the board claps when there's a teacher who's being recognized and the board means, I believe you mean the clap. But can you stand up for teachers in this moment? And say, "Teachers are not groomers, indoctrinators, and sexualizing children." Can you stand up for the teachers because that message is false and it's breaking them? Can you say that's false?
Yeah, um, I do not think that teachers themselves are groomers or indoctrinators. I think it is the NEA that pushes these policies that forces teachers. No, it, it's actually not teachers because I've heard from teachers who say specifically that um, they don't want to follow these policies. They don't want to call children, yeah, they, they don't want to enforce these policies, so.
Thank you everyone for coming, um, thank you for kids, um, everyone have a nice weekend.
Thank you very much.